Permit Stacy Driscoll to participate in the meeting remotely? I'll second it.
Right, a discussion. Okay, all in favor of allowing Stacy to join us remotely, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic. Patty, let me know.
I lost the sound if you can hear me.
There we go.
Oh.
Cool. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments. We've got fifteen minutes. If there's anybody that would like to offer public comments tonight, please step up to the mic and just tell us your name and where you live. Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along. So our first business item tonight, Agenda Item Three A, is presentations from a couple of the architecture firms that have been asked to provide proposals for the renovation and addition at Hill School that we intend to do. So I will turn it over to Patty for an introduction, I guess, of whoever's going first.
How many architects does it take to turn on a computer?
So Stacy, if you can hear me, the presentation is going to be on the other screen in here. I'm not sure that... We turned the camera, so can you tell us? Oh, she is, okay, great. Should've brought the dog in. We'd have entertainment for this process.
We should.
Oh. Don't have power on the computer. Ah, probably because they use... Yeah, if you want to do that, we could, yeah, grab it. I'll... Oh, wait, nevermind. All right. Would you like us to begin? Thank you. Thank you for having us here. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties, but we're here now. We're ready for this. We have a short presentation, twenty minutes. We're going to quickly go through this. We really want to talk about the process and highlight a couple of things that we think are most relevant to your project. Start off, I'm Jay Doherty. I'm a principal in charge with La Valley Brensinger. That means I'm with your project from start to finish. I'm here today, and I'll be here till ribbon cutting the very end. So I'm very excited to be here today. I live not too far down the road. I live in Concord with my wife, who's a teacher, and two little kids. I've been doing school architecture for the last twenty-five years or so. So this is really my passion, and I'm excited to be here today. With me is Julie Spence.
Hi, I'm Julie. I'm a project manager with La Valley Brensinger. I have over twenty years' experience, and I've been working with these two for almost ten years now. I love working on educational environments. I find it really rewarding because of the impact that schools have on the communities and the families that they serve. It's really important to me because I am one of those families. My husband and I have two kids in elementary school here in southern New Hampshire. Before becoming an architect, I got a degree in engineering, and I guess that makes me a little more detail-oriented than some architects, which makes for a good project manager. It also helps me in our collaborations with our consultants. Part of our team, we have VHB engineers, who are civil engineers. Bully Beal Roberts, our structural engineer, and Yeton, who does mechanical and electrical. We work with them pretty consistently on these education projects, and we feel they're the right team for your project.
So my name is Lance Whitehead. I, like Jay, am a principal with the firm. I've been working for La Valley Brensinger Architects for about twenty years now. For me, doing education has kind of been my life's work. I actually grew up in a household that was fifty percent educators and fifty percent contractors. So you can say it was kind of meant to be talked about school construction my entire life. My role in the project is to guide you through education vision, education planning and visioning. We're going to talk about that momentarily, as well as to guide you through the community engagement effort and getting all the voices heard on this project. I look forward to bringing my years of experience, my passion to your project, and making this a success. A little bit about our firm, just a few slides here. We've been in business for about forty-five years, right here in New Hampshire, focused right out of Manchester. We've done, in that time, we've done a number of projects with sixty staff. That's forty-seven architects, seven interior designers, and six marketing that are all supporting each one of our projects that will support us every step of the way. Because we've been so focused on New Hampshire education, we've actually developed a really great process that we're going to talk to you about that incorporates voter engagement and gives us a great result of the poll. I think more so than anybody, anybody else, we've had great success of the polls with the average vote of ours being over seventy-five percent throughout New Hampshire.
Do you guys want questions during or after?
Whichever you prefer.
So to quick follow-up on that last stat, is that the first time the question hits the ballot? Or is that like after perhaps more than one time?
That is the average, including the first, and if there necessitates a second. That's our seventy-five percent is our average vote. So some of these communities, like Newport recently, went eighty-seven percent, I think our highest ever. Our recent one over in Durham went seventy-eight percent. Some of them do, you know, some of them don't pass the first try, but we do average that seventy-five percent if you include every vote we do. Over the years, we have done more than three hundred school projects in New Hampshire, so we have a lot of experience creating great spaces like this that kids really enjoy.
Here's a quick sample of some of the school districts and schools we've worked with. You can see a lot of New Hampshire schools up there. We've been fortunate to work many times with the same school district and same school, so we've done multiple things for those schools. The ones I really want to focus on are just these six right here, real quick. And the six up here are the projects that we're currently working on, at least Julie and I are currently working on. Starting at the bottom corner there, we have Woodbury School. Woodbury was one of the two schools that got state funding last round. You obviously know the other one. So Woodbury's one of them that's in construction, about halfway through construction right now. The other one you see up there on the side is Sugar River. Sugar River also got CTE funding this past round, and Julie's working on that range. Now she's doing documents, so that's a little further along. And then you see three other projects up there that we worked on last year, doing similar process that we're doing with you right now, educational visioning and looking at the spaces. So your project fits in perfectly in our timeline as we're looking for the next round of projects to come up.
So we're going to talk to you today about your project and the framework of success and what it takes to get a successful project. Our experience has led us to develop a very detailed process that we feel is the key to getting to that success. These highlighted items are the things that we're going to talk about in a little bit more detail that you asked us to address in this presentation, and we're going to try to work in sort of that management conversation into every step of the process. So the first step in the process is really about getting to know your district, getting to know your facility. The first step is sort of what we call due diligence, where we review what information you have so far. We go to the site with the engineers, and we look through a full tour of the building and look through all of the spaces, do a detailed walkthrough. We talk with your facilities director and stuff. The idea is to get a overall health of your building that's easy to talk to your community about, but also we back it up with a detailed assessment that shows you how we got to those conclusions.
So while Julie's working with your facility staff and really looking at the bricks and mortar side of your building, kind of inventory of what you have, I'll be working through a process called what we call educational visioning. This process is critical to make sure that what we're doing is making sure we're not treating this just as a normal building, but as a school, and asking, how does it function for education? And how does it meet the goals of your families, your communities, and your educators? First step in this process is heavy engagement with the, what we call your experts. So we start with questionnaires going out to every educator and every facilities person, asking them a myriad of questions about how the building functions, what they like about it, what they don't like about it, you know, and what should be our top ten. We then go into full workshop meetings like this one. You might recognize some of the people from this meeting. We did this in a recent district, but it's really meant to try to look at a ten-thousand-foot view and say, what are we trying to accomplish here? What does education mean to us, and what is our goals for these students? And what are we trying to do in this building? It does give us the ability to start taking that big-picture thinking and start asking questions like, what's significant about your school that we shouldn't, that we should either enhance or not, you know, not lose? What are some of the obstacles that you have that are currently, you know, hindering your educators? What do you want for desired outcomes? And also, what do you see in the next twenty years as learning models and pedagogies that you want to embrace that the building should respond to? We did this in a recent community down in Deerfield, and they ultimately came out with a very detailed report, kind of ten items of each of those items, of each of those things, and then distilled it down to what their community could understand to say, really, we want a building that's community-based philosophy, with nature-based connections, that at the end of the day is safe, code-compliant, and accessible. So that people could understand, well, here's what we're trying to accomplish, and here's how we're going to get there. They had several other smaller things like technology-rich and collaborative common areas that tied into that, but it was really kind of getting the community on board as to where they're headed in the next twenty years. This does inform what we do. So early in the process, this informs the programming, how much you need for square footage, how those spaces are organized, and what those spaces are furnished like to be able to deliver an optimal result for education. Ultimately, that whole educational vision process is aimed at making sure that every dollar you spend has a positive impact on bringing you closer to your educational goals, and that you can seriously say to your voters that this will have a better outcome for your student. This will have a better experience for your family and a better model for your educators.
So at the first step, we're also, we're taking the assessment of what you have now and what Lance is doing with your visioning and where you want to be tomorrow. We're putting those together with you to develop a list of goals. So by setting these really clear priorities, it really helps you define exactly where you want your investments to go and what's going to have the most impact. The next step is the fun part, where we take those goals and we try to find solutions on your building of how we can address those goal priorities.
So not just concept design, not just looking at that, but also thinking about budget as we go into that. So concept, concept design with cost in mind. What I want to do is I want to show you a couple of projects, real quicks, before and afters of, and some of you have already seen these because these are similar to what we showed the other day, but really quick, before and afters of some cost-effective ways that we were able to use existing space to renovate, to make it feel better and do it a cost-effective way. So here's one. This is a space in a library that got taken over by other stuff. If you pay attention to those windows in the upper left-hand corner there, that kind of gives you a grounding where you are standing as we look at the future. This is the after. So the before, the after, we turn it back over to student space. It really becomes a space where students can thrive and be able to use breakout spaces and really become their space again. A typical gym. We've all seen these. High windows letting some light in, but really kind of a dreary gym. As we look at the before, here's the after, where we're really brightening up the space, giving it some nice life, some nice color. Also, just bringing some windows down to the student level so they can see the outside, they can have a connection to the outside. Before, this is a typical hallway. They're really trying hard to make student work a priority here. As you can see, they've pinned stuff to the walls and really just tried to make that a nice space. However, just the infrastructure of this old space is lacking. So here's what we've done. We've blown out some of the walls to make this a much bigger space. It becomes a gallery space, becomes a student space, given it back to the students, and then their artwork really becomes the focus of this space. Some of the cost savings things here, LED lights, we're able to get some rebates on those. The mechanical system, leaving that exposed, so that becomes a learning tool, but it also is some rebates by using some energy-efficient systems. One more for you. So this is a library. Pay attention to those columns you see up there, Lance. So those columns, as we look at this, this was an entry to a library. Taking this and blowing this out, so this really becomes an entry, two-story space, trying to reuse what they have. But what this also does is it creates zones all around this for students to be able to own. So there's breakout spaces and student spaces all around this. So what we're really trying to do is use some existing space to create new space for them in a cost-effective way. A little bit about budget. So as we move from this concept design into a real project, we're going to have to present a number to the voters. So that's your target budget. And as we know, after, when we bid this project out, we can't be over that number. So as you can see, all those numbers are either at or lower than. We can't go back to the public to ask for more money later. In the history of La Valley Brensinger, we've never gone back to the polls to ask for money after we've set a dollar value. This little chart right here that talks about costs. The standards right now for renovation and new construction are about thirty-five, three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred dollars a square foot. What we did was we took our couple past schools, and we just extrapolated them from the year they were, adding escalation for every year. And you can see where our schools are falling. We're below the industry average of what construction costs are, which allows us to do more for the project by doing it very cost-effectively.
So cost management is really part of the design process through the whole project. It starts in programming, when you're setting those priorities and you're weighing educational goals with the costs and getting the right balance. It continues through conceptual design, where we evaluate options based on a dollar per square foot. So you can see what a value that each option has, all the way through construction documents, where we use 3D modeling with our engineers to ensure that all the systems are well-coordinated, thereby reducing the chance for change orders during construction. At each of these milestone points, we're working with an estimator or a construction manager to assess the budget. We are running numbers, and as the project continues and gets more refined and gets more detailed, those costs are also getting more detailed. And we're constantly checking in that we're still on target.
Julie? Sorry. I had a question that came up in our discussion after, we were talking about you after you left last time.
Uh-oh.
Can you just specifically say, if we were to hire you, when you would recommend us hiring a construction manager? You know, when in the process, like right at the very beginning, or kind of, if not then, then when?
I think the right time is once we've gotten an option that we're going forward with. We use per square foot to evaluate all the options, and once we decide on one and get it very clearly defined, then it's a document that we can bring to a construction manager. So another part of it, too, is if you're going for state aid or getting rebates or any other grant opportunities that you're using to get your funding for this project, we're right there with you to help you fill out all those forms in order to make it happen. Oh. Jay's going to talk about you.
All right. Just want to take a couple of seconds here to talk about some of your, a little bit about your project. And again, you've probably seen some of these, but I know some haven't, so I want to talk about these real quick. So these are obviously flawed. We haven't gone through the whole process Julie and Lance just talked about. I'm just taking some assumptions based on my walk-around, looking at your facility, but there's some things that popped out to me, so I just figured, let's talk about them. So you've got a nice space of land there. You've got a lot of space around your school, which is great to see. You've worked on your entry system. You've got safe, secure entry sequence. There's a way to spruce it up a little bit by giving it a little more life, but you definitely have all the pieces in place to secure that system. We've recently learned that the nurses' spaces just aren't adequate in this COVID world. So that's something that definitely will need to be upgraded. IT, you've got some great infrastructure there. Well, you've tried infrastructure upgrades, but the old bones of the school are obviously an older school that just needs some help. But in, in your school was never designed for spaces to hold all that stuff. Classrooms, you've integrated technology nicely. However, you, one-on-one and breakout spaces and those small group spaces that weren't designed back then don't have, and you're trying to make the best you can with those. Cafeteria and kitchen. Your cafeteria, which is your cafeteria, your gym, your auditorium, it's really overtaxed. And just looking at that space, trying to give that more life or more use by doing some changes there. Outside, storage is obviously a big issue, and as I talked about, technology, trying to integrate that. But one of your big pieces looming around the corner there is your module or portable or temporary space that really we should be bringing those kids to secure in your perimeter of your school. So a quick overview, these are just some design concepts, some design ideas. As you know your school, you know the plan there. The As we're showing there are additions of classrooms. That's probably one of the first things you're going to need as your school's growing and as we're spreading out through the school. So we'd work with you to figure out which is the right one, but just some ideas that we could add on those wings. A new entry sequence that could have, that's the C, and that could have a gym next to it. There could be a community space, which is the D there. That could be a gym during the day, a community space during the evenings. And then just turning that space out in front for parent drop-off, power loop, bus drop, all those spaces to organize those. And then the G's you see on here, outdoor classrooms, outdoor learning environments. The G in the far corner near Julie over there is getting close to some wetlands, which could be a really cool experience for kids, rather than building there, but just creating a space over there.
So if Julie's done her job well, which she always does, so, and she's documented everything that is part of your existing building that needs to be corrected or needs to be upgraded, and I've done my job well, which I always do, and have documented with your leadership of what you're trying to accomplish for educational vision, and we've got a great set of goals, and Jay's done his work to present to you some conceptual options. We've gotten to a point where we've got a justifiable project in hand, then we still need to go out to your community. We do that, what we call community engagement, but it actually starts really at the beginning of the process. We know that community members in New Hampshire all have a desire to give input on the things that affect their lives. So this school that affects their student, the bond that affects their tax rate, the maintenance that affects their tax rate, they want to give input. Unfortunately, that desire to give input doesn't always translate to a willingness to show up. So we work with you to create a community engagement plan. Our community engagement plan will go through a couple of steps. We'll work with you, and the first thing is tailoring it to your community. Every community is different, but what a community engagement plan should do is identify who do we want to engage? What do we want to engage them on? When do we want to engage them? And what's the best resource to do that? We know that it has to recognize that your educators and your administration need to be engaged early here, and some of the, you know, people like you, the boards. But we also want to reach as much as we can so that we have put together a communication strategy that's specific to your community. We will promote the process early on and say, here's what we're going to do, and here's when we're going to do it. We'll promote every step of the way, and eventually, we're hoping to get a solution that people look at and say, yeah, I had an opportunity to weigh in on that. And although you can't make decision by community, you can definitely take... And although you can't make decision by community, you can definitely take input by community. The next step is when we're going to eventually switch gears. When we think we have a great project, it's justifiable, the community's weighed in on, that hits our goals, then we're going to work with you to switch gears to what we call a promotion campaign. This is really about getting the information out there so people can educate themselves before a vote. We like to say that a voter that doesn't know, votes know. That's because in New Hampshire, if anybody shows up to the polls and there's a warrant article asking you to say yes or no, we always know that saying yes costs us money and if you don't know what it is, the answer is always going to be no. It is difficult to get information out there, but we're going to work with you every step of the way through that. Ultimately, we're going to put together a similar campaign to the way we got information as to how we're going to get information out. Our campaign will have consistent messaging, it will always be reminding people that, you know, why are we doing this? Answering that one question, why are we even asking for money? Why are we asking to make upgrades? How did we get here? What's all the work we put in to date? What's the solution? How's it impact your student? How does it impact their educational experience? Talking about value versus cost, so what is the cost of the project and what is the value again in return? But ultimately asking them, here's why you would vote yes for the project if you're going to vote yes for this project. Now, we work with a number of grassroots groups as well, so we'll work with you, trying to get information out from the school district side. But we also work with several community groups. We do as much information as possible, really saturating the market. Everything from, we'll be laying out flyers and things like that that can go into the mail. These are postcards from our Oyster River project that were specific to that community, what that community cared about, all the way down through to online promotion and micro-targeting, any group that wants to hear you guys speak, we're going to arm you with all the information you need, put together presentations, posters, as much as we possibly can to saturate the market so that everybody's going to the polls after a 12-month effort. Which we recommend, going in and saying, yeah, I know what this project is and I know how I'm going to vote. Social media and online presence, we do also give you data for that. We give you posting information, we create logos and layouts, we work with other groups. Right now, we see that your, the Pembroke Hill School Facebook page has 613 followers. That's a great spot to post and you've probably got a pretty supportive audience there. We know you also have 1,800 followers on the Pembroke, New Hampshire taxpayers page. So we know that's another page that we want to get information to them so that people, even on that page, on any page, are getting the same information consistently, so they're going to the polls with the right information. We like to say if we don't manage social media, then somebody else will. So let's try to get as much information out there as possible. Ultimately, that's what's led to our 75% community approval rating. It's that we're going to the polls knowing well, you know, that the information's out there, that people have the choice to say yes or no at this, but at least they're going on the right information as they cast that vote. And if we've integrated some community feedback along the process, we should have a good understanding of, is this, you know, have a chance of being successful. So that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jay.
So we get through all those four steps and then we get to bond vote and hooray, we've just successfully passed a bond. We're all happy, we celebrate, everyone's smiling and then we realize we've got a lot of work still to do. We get everything we promised, now we're going to actually make it happen. We move from our celebration into design and that's really where we dive into the building. You can see the top piece there, that's a rendering of the building. So that's what we use for an information model to coordinate systems, make sure we don't have any conflicts with ductwork and structure and all the pieces that tie into that. But we also can use that as a tool that we can show you what the building's going to look like. You can walk through the building, you can experience the building before it's built. The bottom picture is actually the built building, so there's the, from the rendering to the reality. We're also with you through construction, so as you have a construction manager, we're your eyes and ears out in the field to make sure materials are going in correctly, that things are being built correctly and we're through you, with you through that whole process. And then lastly, to occupying, so at the end, when we cut that ribbon and we have happy community, we have happy kids and we have happy teachers and we have a nice space that everyone's in, we're with you through to that point too. So I know that was a whirlwind, hopefully we're just about on time. What would we like to do is if we could have just 90 seconds at the very end for us to wrap up, that would be super helpful. But I'd like to open up to Q and A.
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Okay, I've got a couple. Let's see, so one thing I was curious about is if you do any work toward, I guess you'd call it population forecasts, looking at the development projects that are in town to try to gauge the number of students that we might have in the future for the size of the project.
Very good, oh, that was weird, very good question. We typically don't do that piece, we would recommend someone that specifically does that. What we do is we'd use your historical data to kind of give us a baseline, but we point you to another company that specializes in demographic studies like that, that would be your key for that.
The other one, you mentioned in some of the photos, LED lights and things like that. So I wonder if you could give me a brief, like overall philosophy or possibilities as far as energy efficiency, the possibility of renewable solar, stuff like that?
Yeah, so we actually have a couple of slides in here just to talk about energy because it comes up very frequently. We are very sustainable, our belief is that every one of our buildings needs to have that 30-year lifecycle cost analysis done early on in it. So we're being at a baseline, always being as sustainable as possible. So typically our buildings, you know, are outperforming the energy code by about 20 to 30%. From there, we'll guide you through what we call a sustainability process, which is how sustainable do you want to be? Different communities treat this very differently. Some communities we go into simply say, lower my energy bills. Some say, I don't want any energy bills anymore. And others say, I want to reduce my carbon footprint in every measure. As an example, you know, we just did Oyster River Middle School. One of their tenants from their community was zero energy. They wanted to be ready to be a zero-energy school in the future. They knew that cost-wise, they probably couldn't afford all the solar at once, but they wanted their building set up to be able to do it. Through a power purchase agreement, they're actually net positive. Once they get these, they're working on getting the solar panels installed now, at no cost to them. But we designed the building to be so energy efficient that it is a net positive for them. So they're actually making money each month on their utility bills on the electric side that offsets their fuel costs. If you look at the numbers for them, now we took them through this whole process, which we take you through, once they started saying, how sustainable do we want to be? Do we want to be the minimum or do we want to be the maximum or somewhere in between? We kind of went through all the different aspects of sustainability, some of it being daylighting and thermal envelope, lighting controls, some being HVAC selection, what kind of system you want to operate, do you want fossil fuels or none? And then eventually getting to what we call EUI, Energy Use Index. So it's kind of the miles per gallon for a school, but saying that's our target. And then advertising it early in the concept, saying we're going to hit a low EUI. So if a 100 is the average school in this area, we're going to hit a 50. And then we designed to that EUI from then on. For them, slide Jay, for them, their metric was hitting an EUI that was 18. So 100 is the average, they're at 18 EUI there. With the solar panels, they go to negative, I believe about negative five, so their buildings are actually producing energy. The bigger thing for the community was $3 million savings in 20 years. So they, we look at, everything we do, we try to look at a long-term buyback on. And it does come down to even the design aspects of carpet selections, flooring materials, of what is the long-term buyback of this item? And what's the short-term investment too, because we do have to balance those two things.
Cool, thank you. And just one more, you had the picture of the field up at Hill School and you mentioned, you know, the marshy lands could be an educational opportunity. Does your planning include outdoor spaces? I'm hoping we never have to go through a pandemic again where we have to have our classes outside. But we do have some really cool outdoor classrooms up there already, is it something that you guys?
Oh, definitely, yes, yes, yep. Learning environments go beyond the walls there, they're the whole site, so it's, and it's, we love to see that. That's great that kids are connected with nature like that, so yes, that is part of the whole, the whole part of it, yes.
That's all I have.
I know it's pretty early in the process and you have just a basic graph of those As and where classrooms and stuff. Any plans that you guys are thinking of, the students would stay in the building, correct? Like they're not going to be relocated?
Yes, yeah, we're very familiar with a phased occupied project, so we don't have to move the students to somewhere else. We'd work with the school and the principal and facilities and everyone to make sure we had safe places to secure the contractors from the students and be able to move within the school. So yes, we're thinking you would stay there during it, we wouldn't close school for a year.
All right, thank you.
When we got into this one a little bit more detail, very roughly speaking, it would be something like build new additions, shuffle students into those and then work on some of that emptied-out space.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
So that's, it would be something like that.
Yep, it's more difficult, but it's what we have to do because we can't close down schools, so yes, we've worked with that.
If I can ask Stacy, if you can hear us, you go ahead and try to unmute if you have any questions?
I am unmuted, I don't have any questions, this has been a great presentation, thank you.
Only once? Please, please? All right, yours.
We can just have that last 90 seconds, thank you.
So, I mean, in summary for us, we very much want to work with you. You're a good school district, right in our backyard, you're, you know, we've worked many school districts in your area. We have extensive experience doing schools with that 300-plus projects, 45-plus years, a very experienced team in front of you now. We think we're a great fit. We believe that we stand, we have the best chance of creating beautiful education environments that are cost-effective, but that also do extraordinary things for kids. And we also believe that we're the best fit for you guys to be successful at the polls and getting community engagement throughout this process. So we hope you agree, hope to be your architect for year on.
Thanks so much for coming in, appreciate it. We recently passed a policy to put a time limit on our meetings, so I would say 9:30 is a safe bet. Thanks guys, appreciate it.
[MUSIC PLAYING]
Okay. Right. Stacy, can you still hear us?
I can hear you, Andy, but I can't hear anyone else.
Okay, we haven't started yet, so we gotta get, we gotta get our next presenter to mic. And, all right. Okay, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you. Feel like a game show host. Um, so thank you for having us. Uh, so we'll just do quick introductions real quick. My name is Bill Hickey with the H.L. Turner Group, uh, Engineering Division.
Doug Proctor, head of the architects at H.L. Turner.
Haley Woodbury, and I'm with the Interior Design Department and Architecture. Oh, yes, and I live in Pembroke.
So, just a couple of quick slides about the Turner Group. So, we're based in Concord. Um, we're a full-service A&amp;E firm, so we have everything in-house but electrical engineering. Um, we do have a team member who we work with on a number of projects, including the new Allentown School that will be doing the electrical, who is Sean Prue at the bottom of Yeton Eng-, uh, Yeton Engineering. You can see our pretty faces up there. So Doug, myself, will be acting as co-project manager should we get the project. We think it's much easier to have two people. That way, hopefully, at least one of us are available at all times. Civil engineering, mechanical engineering, Haley in her interior design and architectural planning. So, really, you know, the majority of the design work is done in-house. So, a little bit about community engagement and marketing. I mean, again, this is one of the challenges of the project, right? Making people aware of the project. Very difficult job. Websites, community forums are, are usually somewhat popular. We've done community forums. I think we did one in Allentown one night where we had nobody show up. So, it's hard to get the word out, but, you know, between, you know, websites, social media, um, you know, those community forums, mailings, telephones. You know, we had talked the other night that, you know, in Allentown, they did ribbons, uh, which was a wonderful, very cost-effective idea that if there was a ribbon out front, a green ribbon, you knew the person was supporting the project. If not, it was a good opportunity to talk to that person and, and, and see if they would support the project. So that was, that was a great idea.
So, our, our, our school design philosophy is basically, we're here to support you in, in all of your needs of what you need for the project. And really, the goal of the project is to get a good product and really get it through a warrant article, because that's really the challenge in New Hampshire, because of the way schools are funded. Right here. Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry. Um, so, um, we support you through developing a good educational program, and we do that through discussion. So, we go in and we listen to the teachers, we listen to the admin staff, we listen to the facilities group as to what they need for the building. Um, we also look at the operations of the building when we're doing these assessments and seeing where the hitches are that kind of slow things down or cause problems, you know, you know, you get parent drop-off problems, you get bus problems. Um, you get access problems, all kinds of things can happen. So, we also look at that. Um, and we also design buildings for, for, um, low maintenance and minimal maintenance and, and also for a 30-to-50-year lifecycle. Um, this is your site. Um, it's actually a very nice, large site. Um, it is running up the hill, so it's, 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 it's a little difficult to, um, to, you know, act, to utilize these areas up in here. Um, we can, we can start to take a look at that. Um, the site kind of, the, the way the building's arranged and the site looks, it kind of lends itself to, if we did provide an addition, uh, working over here. But we, the one thing we need to look at with that is when we design buildings, we're also looking at how we add on to the building, but also preserve the function of, uh, you know, an occupied school and also simplify the construction so that the construction groups aren't interacting with, with the school. So, our project approach is, you know, as I said before, we, we listen. We listen to the, to the needs of the school. We also listen to the needs of the community. And we try to address many of the project issues as possible within our schemes. And, you know, that, that might be an evaluation of a number of schemes going, going through. And, you know, it might, might be, in the end, it might be weighing, you know, what's more important or not, and, um, developing the best option that meets all those needs. Um, we want to identify issues, review options again, and, and determine the best solutions. Cost-effectiveness and evaluation is always important to us. Um, within our contract, uh, what we do initially is we develop the options. You, you select ones which are prior to you, and then, um, we narrow that down to possibly a final option or a final two options. But we, under our contract, we go out and, and contract with a construction manager that we know is going to provide good costs. That's not through you, that's under us. And they provide us with feedback information, and we utilize that information ultimately for the, uh, DOE submission. Skip to affordability. Okay. Thank you. So, um, one point we'd like to make is that, you know, we can d- design anything you want, but in the end, we want to, we want to tailor the, the option to the community to what they can afford, because the most important thing is having a project that moves forward. Otherwise, you're doing this, this, you know, in another two years and another three years.
Just want to make one quick point to that, because affordability can be a couple of things. It can be inexpensive initially, but maintenance-wise, like take VCT tile, very popular in school, but you have to strip it and wax it every summer. Very inexpensive initially, but you could go to a little bit more expensive flooring product and take the maintenance burden off the staff to have to wax it every summer. So, you know, there are some of those decisions to be made early that just, maybe a little bit more money initially, but in the long run, will save you a lot of money.
We've been using, um, MCT linoleum tile because it's no wax. You don't have to clean the classrooms out every year to wax the floors, things like that. Also using products called Flotex, which is a flock flooring.
Okay, hit it now. Okay.
Um, these are some of the needs we identified on our tour, um, quickly. Um, increase and improve educational support spaces, remove portables, provide dedicated educational space, you know, improve vehicular circulation, improve the gymnasium ventilation and the kitchen size, possibly a new gymnasium, um, increase storage and improve student storage in the hallways. These are all, those are all common issues we see at most schools nowadays, because a lot, you know, these schools are all designed, you know, 30 and 40, 50 years ago, and they don't have all the special need space that, that you, that you require or the arrangement and productivity that you need. Really, the ideas for the schools come out of the facility assessment and, and the educational assessment. We, we, you know, we can show you, you know, where we might look at the building, but really, until we do that discovery process, we're not going to have a firm idea of what's needed and how, how your, how your money should be spent. Uh, cost-saving me- measures, um, are the, the design options initially, and we evaluate those options, um, again, with the construction manager. Uh, design cost budgeting, um, we use standardization of construction systems. So, something that's more general, um, generally used in the, in the communities so that we don't have something odd that's causing cost overruns or something like that.
Jeff, sorry. I have a question about, um, use of a construction manager. I think I caught earlier that, um, uh, well, actually, I need a little bit of help. So, you said something, if, if we hire you for this part, you know, the design part, um, then you guys would subcontract out with a construction manager for help on the DOE education application? I think I, I think I got that part right.
For estimating.
Okay.
And, and also for, um, logistics and feasibility of how we're.
Okay.
Sorry.
But do I understand correctly, then, at some point in time, there would be an expectation that the district itself would hire a construction manager? And if that is correct, when would you expect we would do that?
Right. So, let's say everything's going great. Um, you actually are moving forward with your project, whether you're getting building aid or not. In the building aid process, you know, you'll hear probably after January of '23, '24? That, um, you're, you've made it on the list, and then that summer, you would start to, um, get your construction manager lined up, get your owner's project manager lined up. But until then, you wouldn't need to do that. Um, and then, we talked about this last time with bid options and alternates. We like to incorporate a lot of alternates and a lot of bid options with having to do with materials and scopes of work just to preserve, um, the budget and also preserve the schedule, because it helps your project move forward. And then, a lot of these alternates are things that can happen later in the project. So, as contingency monies are released, you know, we're able to, um, afford, you know, more high-end materials in, in different design phases. An example of that is at Auburn School, um, we were able to pick up the renovation of an additional seven classrooms through, through bid alternates. Um, also, carbon footprint and less than energy, um, usage. We talked about this. Um, improving existing envelope is the best thing you can do. Um, at Allentown, we're, uh, adding photovoltaics, possibly, if, if the community decides to go that way. Geothermal heat sources. I've done those before. That's probably the most efficient way to gain heat um, and save, save money. Green, green power supplier is always, um, an easy way to go and less embodied energy and materials. Uh, our design values are just to be flexible, fun and engaging, um, and lots of light in views. Um, and then, safe, you know, safety through, um, passive and active security systems and also through air systems in the building so that we're also, um, viral safe. Um, and just energy efficiency and durable and economic, as we've talked about before. Educational expe- spaces should, you know, really, um, encapsulate all levels of teaching, whether it's one-on-one or classroom setting. Actually, Bill's wife is a, um, is a third grade? Okay, she's, she was third grade at Bo Elementary School. My wife is, is the, uh, is the math tutor, um, Title I tutor over at, um, Beaver Meadows School in Concord. So, we both hear about teaching a lot. So, and then, um, community transitory growth, that was the, the idea that in any design we're doing, we're also planning for the future, that we're allowing for additional classroom space in case you have these bubbles in the population moving up, and you can shift those classrooms around. And what we, you know, with a, with a straight, um, you know, elementary school, we'd probably recommend two of those classrooms. And probably with a K-8 system, we'd probably recommend three of those classrooms, just so you're able to accommodate those bubbles moving up through. And we've also had the discussion with Department of Education on that, and they're kind of on board with that theory of doing that. And then, any necessary additions, we also designed the building so that we're able to grow so that we don't have four corners of a building that you really can't add on to where you're closing off corridors and things like that. So, we like to be able to add on to. And that also gives the opportunity for views out the building as you're going down corridors. And thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, just real quick in closing, this is actually the Auburn Village School. Um, and this is, Doug and I will be the face of the project if we should be, and we would love to be hired for the project. But these are the folks that make us successful, is our team back at the office. This is, this is part of our team. Yeah, we're about 30, I think the number was 33, um, in, in the Concord office. So, that, that's our staff, and this is just, you know, these are the, these are the people that make us look good. So, well, thank you and answer any questions you might have.
The one from, sorry, that presentation's the one from last week. We called it down just to say it was in your time limit.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Is it on? There we go. Um, I'm really sorry that I can't remember her name, but can you guys, guys just talk real quickly? Yeah, that you guys have dedicated marketing staff. Can you mention that real quick?
So, Cindy is with our office. She's our marketing director, and she's also, um, familiar with working on websites and, um, different surveys and what other things.
Just basically any, you know, social media, print media, whatever it is. Uh, she's on vacation. We didn't think it was right to drag her off of vacation and, and have her come here tonight. So, we're doing our best to cover. She did wish us good luck, uh, just before we came in. So, yes, we have a, you know, and she'll be at your disposal to help with whatever preparation that you may need. You know, and something else you might want to look at, you know, we can provide all sorts of sketches and plans and things, but people look at those and what. So, if you were and had the time to go to the Allentown School website, we did a fly-around and also a walk-through of that school, and you'll see the power that graphics like that really help sell a project. And that's something we could, you know, we would certainly be willing to do for this project as well.
Say, like, as someone who lives in Pembroke, a Pembroke graduate, and then I bought a house in Pembroke, um, I am familiar with the community and I'm happy to help explain or direct any decisions or, you know, operations, things happening that might need that extra, um, understanding. And I am a part of the Pembroke Women's Club, and so I am involved in a lot that happens in town. So, I would be happy to help anyone understand or, um, you know, get the word out what's happening and explain really reasons behind what we're doing.
Thanks. Others? Go ahead. Yeah?
I don't know. Is it on? Okay. Could you just, um, go through, um, how you get to know the community, the staff? What's your approach in getting to know everybody so that you understand really what this community's about and what the school's about?
Well, as you know, Amber, Doug's a very likable guy, so people just, you know, gravitate to Doug. Um, you know, it's really about as far as the school staff goes, it's coming in to meet with them, to spend time. You know, it's not just the principal, it's not just the facilities folks. You know, it's spend time with the folks in the kitchen, spend time with everybody, grade level. You know, and the principal will help determine who do we talk to, who, you know, who makes sense to talk to and who doesn't, and really spend time understanding, you know, their issue and their vision of the future. So, that's really.
So, so, um, I, I think our main thing when we come into a project is we see ourselves as part of your team. And, and we think everybody works as a team, and what, and, you know, that's everybody, every, every teacher, every special ed person. You know, they're all part of a team, and we're trying to make a better environment for everybody, correct? So, that's really the goal, and, you know, we, we provide guidance and lead, and, um, leadership, but, you know, we don't want to take over. We want, we want to get everybody involved, because that's when you have the most successful project. And, you know, we're basically, um, you know, we're here, part of the community, and we, we really enjoy serving our local community, and, and we'd love to help you with this project.
Yeah, and the community forums, as far as, you know, pull the community in, you know, have people come in. You know, Doug will make a presentation, review options, and really try to mine information and ideas from people, because, you know, you get those ideas incorporated into the project, and all of a sudden, there's buy-in. And then, if people get excited, hey, listen, these guys are listening to us, they understand our issues, you know, they're really working with us. And, you know, we'll go to men's, we'll go to women's club, we'll go to the library, we'll go. You know, we've done presentations for groups in many different towns. You know, if you guys feel it's important for a presentation to be made there, we'll be happy to do it. So, it's really just getting out in the community, and honestly, having a community member on the team, we can't get any better than that, because neighbors, Haley's going to go to the store, she's going to have people tell her what they think, which is great. When we were working in Hampton, Doug and I would go down early and have dinner at different restaurants every other week and just talk to the people in the restaurant. What do you think? What do you think about the school? And they're like, oh my God, it's $25 million. We can't afford it. And we explain it to them, and then all of a sudden, maybe we can afford it. So, I think it's just, you know, getting people out, and we'll be here to, to talk to people and, you know, just try to get to know them.
Others?
I have a question, Andy.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Can you talk a little bit about accessibility? And what you do to incorporate accessibility from the beginning?
Um, yeah, I know. Uh, do you have a specific thing or a specific question?
No, just kind of broadly.
So, um, that, that comes under the facility assessment. So, you know, we follow, uh, accessibility code as required by, um, New Hampshire. So, you know, we follow accessibility code as required by New Hampshire Building Code Law. And, you know, during our facility assessment, we'll go around and evaluate different areas. But we also go around and look at things and see if they make sense. The other thing we do with accessibility in schools is make sure that just because of the way that we're doing it, that somebody in that requires those needs doesn't feel like they're singled out. So as an example, over in Hopkinton, we just did a project where they wanted us to come in and just replace, they had a five-foot set of stairs. And they just wanted us to go in and replace their lift. And we said, well, the lift's kind of awkward because if somebody's coming down there with their friend, they have to sit there and wait for them to get on the lift and use the lift and come down the lift. So instead, we figured out a way to actually incorporate a ramp in the building. So then, this is on the way out to the playground. So then they're always coming, you know, they're always with their friend, they're coming down the ramp, and, you know, it's just a lot more smoother. So in doing that stuff, we're always looking at those things and making sure that, you know, companions, you know, no matter their ability, can stay companions and nobody feels awkward. But, you know, we're always looking at bathrooms and all that other stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, we both, I have a son, an adult son with autism, who was one of the first mainstream students at Bo. And, you know, so living that from the parent's side firsthand, you know, not many physical, but a lot of other challenges. So really, through that experience, you know, we're hyper-aware of making sure, you know, to be inclusive as possible. And that could include audio systems for the classrooms. You know, there's a lot of different things you can do to address different students' needs. You know, it may not just be the physical access.
Thank you.
Bill and I both have sons, but they're on the opposite sides of the spectrum. My son's like super-high functioning and very smart. He's just a real challenge, but, you know, you figure it out.
Any other questions, Stacy?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. I've got just a couple. I was wondering if your planning would incorporate outdoor spaces, whether that be outdoor classrooms or, you know, fields and fences, things like that.
Yep. Outdoor classrooms. And we try to relate classroom wings to playground areas so that they make sense. So there's not a lot of traveling, having to go on through the school and everything. And that kind of, that also protects your finishes within the school, you know, so you don't, you're not tracking in a lot of stuff. But yeah, there'd be landscape design, outdoor classrooms, sitting walls, things like that. The other thing we like to do is actually make it easy for teachers to observe what's going on out in the playground. And, you know, because we have wives that are teacher, give them some benches to sit on.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, and I think too, when we were on the site, we noticed you have a lot of trails established, and it looks like there's a lot of areas already established. So we would certainly understand those better and, you know, talk to everybody and how do we incorporate the design, you know, to make those still as usable as possible.
And the other one, and I think you sort of touched on this. You were talking about flexibility with bubbles in grade levels and things like that. Do you guys do a sort of like a population forecast, look at the projects that are building in town and sort of try to project out what those student levels might be in the future?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes that relies on a demographic study. And it's weird, you know, we went through that in Allentown a little bit, and we've gone through it in other towns. A lot of demographics as far as schools have been, you know, as everybody knows, kind of flat or decreasing. And usually, what we found out is that even though there are developments in town, you know, the actual school growth is, you know, a fraction of that. But there are different groups like NESDEC that look at demographic studies and things which we can do. And you'll have to do that as part of the building aid submission. So let's say, so there's a maximum amount of square footage you're allowed to build for an elementary school or a middle school or whatever. And they basically just say, you know, in a middle school, it's like, okay, you get 140 square feet per student, you know. But those standards are so antiquated, they don't account for all the special ed space needs, all the, you know, adequate-sized gymnasium, all the other spaces that they recommend in the programming, that the state recommends. So usually you end up with a building that is more than that allowable. And what you have to do is justify that. And you justify that through the design population. And in order to do that, you need some of that basic information on the demographics. And if you're going over, you need to state why you're going over, and that demographic study comes in very handy to do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say real quick too, we could go to Office of State Planning and pull some numbers from there. But the other thing we really like to do, we haven't touched on, is make sure police department, fire department, building inspector, everybody's included early on in the process. You know, so establish, that's a great way to establish an early relationship with the building inspector. Just go over, talk to him, explain to him what we're thinking, ask if he has any concerns or questions, talk to him about, you know, what do you see, what's coming in town, you know, things like that. So it's, you know, it's part of that early process to really start to get, you know, some of the folks at the town level involved, invested, you know, and behind the project.
So, anybody else? Okay. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to enter non-public now to discuss this and come back to our goal-setting discussion? Or do we want to wait?
I prefer to go into non-public now, just get it done, once fresh.
I agree.
Okay, Stacy, is that okay with you?
Yep, I agree.
Perfect. Okay, so the board has need to go into a non-public session in accordance with the New Hampshire RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, small letter c, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. And we're going to invite the building committee to join us in this non-public session. So on a roll call vote to enter non-public at 7:57, Stacy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we'll ask everybody else. B is at least an initial attempt to set some of our goals for next year. We don't have Mr. Gaus here, so, you know, goals can always be updated and amended. But, oh, you want to do the motion first? Yeah, sorry. Sticking to my sheet here. Go ahead. Yeah, my bad. So yeah, so never mind, we'll step back and see if there's a motion on the topic of the vendors that we interviewed tonight. Somebody, anybody?
I motion. Someone can help me here. I motion that we accept the proposal from LBA as our architect to move the.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion that's appropriate for public setting? Okay, then all in favor of accepting the proposal from LBA as our firm in regards to the Hill School project? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, oh yeah, sorry. So Stacy, can I get your vote?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, now we can move on to 3B. My apologies. So goal-setting, like I said.
By that motion, do I list Stacy as a roll call and you guys as a voice vote?
Oh, okay. Do I may redo it then? Wait, we're good? Everybody? Thank you. Thanks, Danny. Okay, so I've got some stuff in email, but it wasn't like terribly long. So I will just open the floor. We can go person by person if you want. And, you know, if you've got key goals that you want, I can kind of take some notes here as we go. And once we've heard from everybody, we can sort of consolidate into something more specific, if you want to do that. If we can, you know, we can go into the weeds at some point, but I think for now, if we can go sort of point by point briefly, we don't have, you know, a ton of time left in the meeting, and I'd like to get through as much as possible. So I'll start with Stacy, if you've got anything.
Communication is my largest goal. Communication and what is, as far as what is being seen by the public. I guess that's important and clarifying.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Melanie?
I sent you an email, but pretty brief. One, I think we obviously just made progress is the space needs at Hill. And the second thing that I would like to see is a three-year strategic plan for the Pembroke School Board. Identifying and selecting a facilitator to run that by May of 2023. And what I was brainstorming and hoping, we can talk about later, is I was proposing we put aside some time, seems it's such a time thing. We don't usually meet in the summer, setting some dedicated time in the summer of 2023 to get it done so it doesn't interfere with our other big projects. If my board mates agree.
Okay. Amy?
All right, so I have my list from last year. I feel like I would still like to have us have more improvement with having the entire board packets ready by Friday. And I feel like this fits into the communication piece so that there's time to get it out to the public as well. And doing a better job, a lot of this is communication, doing a better job routinizing outgoing communications, which would include having a Pembroke School District Facebook site. And making more mileage out of communications. I don't think that we do a great job of having one communication that gets blasted out over several sources. So I think we could get more mileage out of times where someone does make, you know, where oftentimes when someone generates a communication, but then it just goes one place. I think that the various websites, including the Pembroke School District websites and the individual school websites, though improved, still could benefit from continuous improvement. I think we need to get into some sort of, and we've been talking about this, but I think I'd like to, you know, put it in writing for our goals, get into a routine of having performance evaluations for Superintendent Sherman, which, as we've discussed, requires coordination with the, I always forget here, Executive Board or SAU Board. I think that we should institute an annual social event for the board, by the board, with our families. I also would like to have a strategic plan put in place. My schedule would be faster. I think what Melanie said was start work in the end of the school year of 2023. So I was thinking my goal would be have the plan done by the end of 2023. And so that was my last year list. My this year list is, we, many of us have had so many feelings and comments about communications. I feel like we should solicit a donation or budget for hiring a consultant to help us develop a communications plan and/or improve our website slash online slash social media presence so it's effective. My battery just too much. All of, thank you, Sandy. All of the architectural teams during their original interviews mentioned that like, no matter what you do at the town meeting vote, there's gonna be like at least one voter that shows up and says like, what? I didn't know we were planning on building a new school, you know. And so I know that there will never be a communications plan that reaches every single person in the Pembroke School District. And so that's not my goal. But I do think that we could have a communications plan that is more effective than our current communications. And so in terms of getting going on this, I think that we could solicit organizations who do this, provide this service, to provide proposals for providing a communications plan to us, which usually they would do for free, and to include a proposed cost for that service in their scope. And that would give us some sense of what a communications plan recommendation would look like, what amount of money we would need to budget and/or solicit for a donation. And that would be a helpful first step to move forward on such an idea. Also, as part of improving communications, I would like the school districts to begin to produce an annual report. I am aware, of course, that there's the quote-unquote annual report that comes out from the town of Pembroke. And that in there, there is a pretty large section devoted to the schools. And there's, you know, lots and lots of information. It's my thinking that there might be so much information in there that perhaps not many people, you know, read through it. So when I say an annual report, I'm thinking something more along the lines of like two to six pages, you know, glossy, infographic, primarily pushed out digitally. There may not even be that many hard copies, but very modern, consumable, salesperson-y, kind of selling the awesome product that this school district produces. What I wrote in my notes is a modern, zippy, accurate, but promotional publication, kind of like a mini magazine. I think we should hire the School Board Association to get us on board with their subcontractor to do the strategic planning. And then the last thing is might be the biggest thing, which is that I have become increasingly concerned about themes I have been hearing repeatedly that all relate to the likelihood that compensation might be too low across the school district for various positions regarding the possible insufficiency to attract and retain all sorts of positions. And that our schools in the district might be, might be or be perceived to be not as desirable as they once were previously. And to me, that could mean an increasing school budget. But that obviously an increasing school budget has taxpayer implications. And I think that these issues are, if left unaddressed, is a bad idea. And so I just want to throw that issue out there as something that I think strategic planning is the way to solve. And I think that that is one of the reasons why it's critically important to move forward with that as quickly as we can. That's all.
Thank you. So I have five, and I think, so I actually wrote these out in like possible language. And I think they're sort of broad, and I think they encompass a lot of what you guys have already said. So there's not a whole lot of anything new here, except possible, possibly the first one. And this was just, you know, putting on my, what is the job of the school board hat? So what I wrote down is, one, prepare a responsible student-first budget that provides a more than adequate education. Two is negotiate a contract for the teachers that aims to retain our talented teachers and continues to move them toward at least state average pay. Number three is oversee, facilitate, and advance the process of renovating and expanding the Hill School. Number four was to implement a process in collaboration with the SAU Board for superintendent evaluations. And the last one, I just broadly said, create a communication plan. I think that that's the one that sort of is like a work session type item where we can tackle that when we come back into session and work on that over the first few months. I, you know, when forming goals, I don't know how specific we want to be. I don't know, you know, if we want to have in there that we specifically plan to contract with somebody for a communication plan, or if we just want, but that our goal is to create a communication plan. And then when we get into, you know, achieving that goal, we make the determination on how we're going to do it. The one comment that I did want to make, I think I mentioned last time that I was going to reach out to Barrett. I did so specifically about the strategic planning piece. And my concern going in, which I did not tell Barrett before I asked him the question, was was the amount of time. And I think I expressed that last time, last meeting. When I asked, I asked Barrett to give me an idea of, you know, what's involved. And much of it was the same thing that he said at our meeting last week. He talked a little bit about the $5,000 starting price tag and the number of hours that that gets you and all of that. And I sort of kind of redirected and said, you know, what does this mean for the school board? And he said, it is a lot of work. And then he said, why, you know, why are you asking? And I said, well, we don't have sort of a strategic plan and we feel like we should. But, you know, we also have a building project. And he sort of cut me off right there. And he said, as much as I would like to do this for you and I, you know, it's my job to sort of promote some of the services that we offer here. He said, I would not advise that you undertake strategic planning at the same time that you're working on a building project. His rationale was simply the amount of time. And he, his feeling was that it would not be reasonable for a board to do both of those processes the justice that they deserve. So his recommendation would be that we wait until after either the building project is, you know, in flight, like being built, because that's the point where we're not making a whole lot of decisions anymore, or until it's completed. But I leave that as as a comment. That's certainly my feeling on it, but I'm only one member of the board. So I just wanted to share, I did ask Barrett if he was okay with me paraphrasing him tonight in public, and he said absolutely. He said that he, you know, has enjoyed working with us. He's always happy to come out and talk about it more if we want to in the fall. But that he didn't think it was a good idea to do both of those two things at the same time. So we've heard from everybody. I guess as far as strategy here, you know, Amy had a lot of very specific points around communication. How do we want to write a goal? I think some of these are easy, right? We, I think we should have a goal around budget. I think we, more than one of us said something about contracts and retaining teachers. And the the building project, obviously, is going to be huge. And I think we're all, you know, on board with establishing a process for evaluating superintendent that can be used, you know, forever. So I think the big one hanging out there then, if I'm, if I'm not forgetting anything, is communication. And I think it's going to take some time to define exactly what we mean by that. So I think I'm wondering how, how do we want to write that goal? How specific do we want to be with intentions? Open, open to ideas.
Want to go? Okay. I guess my first thing is I kind of disagree on the strategic plan. It can be done on two Saturdays. It is a lot of work. A building project is a lot of work, but a lot of your strategic plan of all the goals we just listed, that's what is in your strategic plan. What we're doing, we're making ourselves more work than we need to. Everything you just listed, everything she listed, it's all in your strategic plan. And I know it's a lot of work, but if I can do it, anybody can get through it. And it really is only taking, you could do it on a Saturday in the summer so that it's not keeping up with everything else. But it'll give you a really good, and the public, this is our vision. This is the Pembroke School system. This is our vision. This is our mission. These are the things we're going to accomplish in the next three years. One of them is your communication plan. And these are the A, B, C, D, E that I'm going to do to get there. And by this date, we're going to have one. That's all in your strategic plan. And doing, I, I get where you're going and I know it's a lot of work. But that's just creating like a Band-Aid when this other thing is a fluid document that carries you for a three to five year period. That's just my mission. That's just my.
Sure. Is it?
I'm glad you brought that up because when, I think now in the educational community, at least they're talking, they're referring to them as a plan on a page. So I think what you're talking about is different than what Barrett is advising you on because it's not, I think if the School Board Association does it, they're talking about bringing consultant and it's going to be very costly. It's going to be many committees. They're going to do, you know, demographics. They're going to do, oh, it's very comprehensive. And I'm not sure that's what you're looking for. I think what you're describing is very different and can be done differently. And it wouldn't necessarily be a consultant for 40 hours. So I think it might be two different things.
I think he may be thinking something totally different, but I think Patty's right. Like, we did pay money. It was 6,000. It was 16 hours. We got it done, but that facilitator grabbed all those ideas similar to the pictures that we just saw tonight. They drafted it. We gave them the dates. We gave them who's responsible. They helped us create a mission and a vision statement. They produced it. And then they fed all that data back to you in a little like three to four page paper, not hours and hours.
So that's the thing that was given was like 40 to 50 hours.
Yeah, if I can. The, I think what the School Board Association is talking with us about is a pre-canned process, which is great and something we might graduate to and probably, I think something we should aspire to. But I think that that is not what we need to do right now. I also agree that some strategic planning cannot and should not wait. I think that probably the School Board Association subcontractor is a good resource for us because they wouldn't be a resource to the School Board Association if they were, you know, very unsatisfactory. We should just lean on their experience and maybe just get that contact information and say like, hey, we want to do like an à la carte thing, you know? We want to do what she said. Can you do that? Like, can you do the not big deal program? And then, because we've already done all this work, what can you build for us? We can commit to, you know, maybe two six-hour days in the next six months, something like that. I don't know, the next 12 months. We can talk about the details. We can budget, I don't know, 3,000, 6,000. We can figure that out. And then they give us the paper with, which hopefully, to answer your specificity question, I like specificity because, you know, I subscribe to like the SMART goal, which I can't even remember what all that means. But I know one of the things is like, you can know when it's done, you know? Okay, measurable or something. So like, I know that we don't have a Facebook site. So to me, that's a measurable goal as opposed to like, make communications better, which we all agree with, but like, I don't know when that's done, you know? And so hopefully, a consultant helping us will help us like, okay, so make communications better. Great. You all want to do that. Now, what are the specific things you're going to do to achieve that? And, and here's your checklist. And once you've done those things, you know, presto, blammo, boom, you've achieved your goal.
I think that.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I tend to see where Andy and Barrett are coming with, coming from, from strategic planning. I've been working on strategic plan for the IOD, which was supposed to be done in February, and we're still not finished. It also, we need to think about what is internally facing versus externally facing. SMART goals seem to me to be much more achievable and can look beyond the here and now. And I agree, you know, I said communication is my largest concern, but I agree, those need to be SMART goals. I really hesitate to think that we can have a strategic plan with the five of us and get that done this summer. I think we may need to have some outside, even looking at community members in thinking about where we're going with a strategic plan.
Okay. I had something that went right out of my head. Oh, I was just going to say, I think we should, and I don't know if this is something we work through the next 27 minutes. But I think that part of the communication conversation is there's a line somewhere between what is a board goal and what is, you know, a goal for the administration. And I think, I think where we play into the goal for the administration is more of a, we put together a policy, right? This is the quality or quantity or something of communication that we expect from our schools. And then we, that's on them. But how we communicate as a board, us having our own Facebook page, things like that, that stuff, you know, we can, we can hammer down on. So again, a part of this is just how do we write these up? But I think it's, it's, it's important to remember that there's sort of two pieces of communication. And what goes out over one call now versus what goes on the Hill School Facebook page is sort of out of our realm. But we certainly can write a policy that provides direction and expectation for that. I don't have a point. I just wanted to put that out there.
Saying, I see what you're saying, Stacy. But I, I still think that what I was just advocating for makes sense, but I think then maybe what what would make it clearer is if we stick with language like, you know, school board goals. You know, or school board plan. Because it is us as a board applying some strategic thinking to what we want to prioritize. You know, otherwise we're left just going through the motions of, okay, a public comment. Let's hear from the administrators. Do we have to, you know, approve hiring or firing? Done. Without taking that next sort of leadership, executive prioritization role. Or we're left in emergency mode, just reacting, which has not been great in the past couple of years.
I agree.
I agree with, I agree.
Quickly, could I completely reroute us for a quick second? And make a motion that we accept the resignation? Because I forgot that piece too. There a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll, I'll, we'll just do a roll call vote because Stacy's on the phone. So roll call vote, all those in favor of accepting the resignation. Amy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And I'm a S. Thanks. Sorry. Okay. So I guess I want to, I want to interrupt the discussion in a different way now because we are getting close to time. So I cannot make a meeting on June 30th. That doesn't mean you all can't have one if you so desire. But we have two meetings in August before school starts. So if, if we're all on, in your opinion, a similar enough page, I'd be happy to take the action item of drafting some goals and maybe solicit, run them by Gene, see if he has additional input with, with the intention of that being a main agenda item at our August two meeting. And, and the idea would be we come out of that meeting with approved, approved goals for the school year. I don't know, again, if you, if you would rather meet next week, you can, but I cannot be there.
I also can no longer meet next week.
I mean, I think, and I'll, I'll add, I guess, I think that we, I think we all share a pretty similar vision of, of this, of the goals. We, you know, we may disagree on some details, but I think overall, we, we know the five or six main things that we want to see happen next year. So I don't, I'm not sure that you know, having this officially written up and stamped with the seal of approval this very moment is of, of the utmost importance as, as long as we're all in agreement on, you know, the direction that we're headed here.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Can we agree to have them be SMART goals?
If I can reach out to you for help, because it's been a long time since I've written SMART goals. And I remember like three out of the five letters.
Sure.
I, if I can, I can draft stuff in plain language and then I'm, I'm happy to share with you, Stacy, if you want to tweak them to fit that methodology.
All right.
Can I request that we, I know you know how to do this, Andy. Can you maybe put them in an Excel?
Yeah.
With like, this is just conceptual, but if I were to do this right now, I would do three columns on the right so that we could fill them in as we were going, like, you know, red, like we haven't even touched this goal, you know, yellow light, we're working on it. Green light achieved or something, some sort of like tracking system. And then we would look at them.
I was going to say, I don't see why we couldn't have that as part of the board packet, at least our monthly business meeting, if not every meeting. So we're, so it's constantly on our mind. That's a good idea.
Can I request something?
Absolutely. That's where you're here.
Yeah, I know. If there's the August meetings before we go into contract season and budget season and building and everything else before we hit down that road, is there some time on one of those agendas? Can I get the board a couple examples of school board strategic plans? And get you a couple names with some proposals so that you guys can see that there is a Plan B to do this that's not 55 hours?
Yeah, that would be great. I would appreciate that. And the other thing I was going to suggest if we had time, and I think we've got time. It, it sort of goes to the social piece that you mentioned, but without the families. I know that sometimes boards do retreats. So, you know, as far as depending on who we talk to and what Barrett comes back with, and if there is an à la carte option, you know, maybe early in the school year before everything gets crazy, you know, maybe we could do a Saturday somewhere for an eight-hour day with a lunch and whatever, where we can put in a lot of work on something like this. I don't, and I don't know the rules around that.
September 24th, so as long as there's cake.
It could be double cake on the 22nd.
All right. What did you say, Stacy?
I said there'll be double cake on the 22nd.
I love it.
So yeah, just something to have in the back of your heads. Saturdays might be easier to say than actually make happen, but.
An example that I showed you that's not, yes, there's some that do take months. I've done one that was 13 months long, but you don't have to do that. So I'm thinking maybe if I show a couple examples. Sure, I'd be glad to, yeah.
Cool. So I think what I'm hearing is no meeting next week, which would make our next scheduled meeting August 2nd, same bat time, same bat channel. And I will, I will formalize these to the best of my ability. And I will then pass them to Stacy for transforming them into SMART goals. I don't want to, you know, share with everybody as to, you know, subvert meeting rules or anything like that. And then we will, we'll get them in the drive for the August two meeting. I'll reach out to Gene specifically and see if he has anything that we didn't cover tonight that he wants to include. And he's going to say culture climate survey. And then, cool, so then we'll meet on August 2 and, and we'll finish this process. So, so we have something going into September to work forward. And we'll, we'll have it documented in such a way that we can keep track of progress throughout the year. It's a really good start. So we've got a short amount of time. We do have one, one thing to tackle in an additional non-public session, which is also New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, small letter C. Matters which should be discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a board member. On a roll call vote to enter into non-public again at 9:12 PM, Stacy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we'll ask everybody, almost everybody.